Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for coming this evening. Welcome to the sixth public session of the Board of Commissioners. Today is Monday, March 13th, 2017. Mr. Secretary, would you please take the role?
Mr. D'Amelio?
President.
McCloskey?
Here.
Mr. Siegel?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mr. McGarrett?
Here.
Mr. Wexler?
Here.
Mr. Aliva?
Present.
And Mr. Condon?
Here. Will everybody please rise who can? And tonight's benediction will be given to us by Reverend Tim Johansson from the Temple Lutheran Church.
Good evening. As we begin this evening, I come to you with a perpetually heavy heart in light of the, for lack of a better word, insane heroin and opioid epidemic that is ravaging not just our nation or our county, but this very township. And so as we begin prayer, I'd like us to first remember our first responders. And when many of our young first responders have to resuscitate and save people who are their very own age or even younger, it gets very real and can weigh on them heavily. So I'd like us to remember our first responders who are going through so much. But also, over the past two weeks, we lost another life, a young man who died of an overdose. And so let's begin with silence. Lord God, you desire life for us. You desire that we needn't live in fear. Nevertheless, so many lives are being affected right now by this heroin opioid epidemic. We pray for your salvation. We pray that you move in our community, empower those who are fighting against it, and help us to do your very will of promoting life. We also pray for the many people doing good work in other parts of our community for hunger programs, those who are looking out for the 1,700-plus people who live in poverty in Haverford Township. We pray for the work of people who are mobilizing to find homeless neighbors' homes and jobs and purpose once again. We pray for faith communities. We especially pray for the five faith communities that are in pastoral leadership transition or will be in the next few months: for Grace Chapel, Armenian Martyrs Congregational Church, Lannock Presbyterian, Bethany Collegiate, and Hope Methodist. We also pray for our library and senior center, whose directors are seeking other opportunities, including retirement. We pray that you guide them, guide them all, in their transitions and in their discernments. We pray for our sisters and brothers of the Christian faith who are in Lent and getting ready for Easter. We pray today for our Jewish brothers and sisters as they celebrate Purim. And in a climate of increased antisemitism and Islamophobia, we pray that you would move us to a better way of living, a way that's rooted in your love, a way that regards our fellow neighbors as humans, ones who deserve our love. We pray for our commissioners, our police, our firefighters and EMS. For the wonderful work they do, we thank you. God bless us in this time together, that we may be a blessing for so many who need it in this community. And we pray in your most holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Chief?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend, thank you for your words. Number two on the agenda, Mr. Vice President, if you would please take that? Which is a presentation. Vice President Aliva?
I'd like to call up Tom Donovan, who is the PAC leader of PAC 11 from Sacred Heart. He has a presentation to make to our, to Jim McCanns, our paramedic director. Want to come up, Jim?
Mr. Gentili, Commissioners, thank you very much. I would like to present this to Haverford Township EMS from PAC 11 Sacred Heart, Manoa, for the outstanding work that the EMS chief has done with the people under him, the guidance and everything he has given for helping us out. His crew had advanced 47 boys onto different awards with their dedication and help. And myself, being a lifelong member of Haverford Township, we could not ask for a better EMS squad and chief. So on behalf of Sacred Heart, PAC 11, Jim, thank you very much.
Thank you. Very much.
I'd like to recognize Jason Page and Tracy Maxwell. They did the heavy lifting when it came to this award. Like so many of our rescuers, of course, they're out there every day doing the work of EMS, trying to help those who need the help and try to save lives when they can't. But you need to know a little bit more about these two. We were asked by Tom, who I've known for quite a while, if our department could do a presentation and work with their scout troop on a Cub Pack to work on an EMS and emergency preparedness bag. And we did. And I reached out to Jason and Tracy, and as fate would have it, that night, they were able to come in and work. Now, they both have families. They both work a job and a half, like everybody at EMS. But on top of that, and going to school and all their other responsibilities, they're both scout leaders. Tracy has her scout troop, girl scout troop in Upper Darby, and Jason's in Lansdale. In Lansdale, how could you pick two better people for this job? But it was a great evening, great group, and it's great to see perhaps the next generation of EMS and rescuers and police officers coming up through scouts. But the heavy lifting, I actually hear more heavy lifting. You guys get the whole impressive word. Thank you. Picture. Thank you very much.
Next on our proclamations here, Mr. D'Amelio, I believe, you are up next. And Mary Colleen, would you please come forward with your family, please, at least with your mother? Your father is already up here.
Should've made this to McCann's night. Well, truly is an honor, again, to recognize members of our community that perform outstanding achievements. So I have this proclamation. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania takes great pleasure acknowledging notable achievements of young adults in the community. Whereas the Board of Commissioners wish to recognize Colleen McCanns. Whereas, Colleen McCanns, no, I was going to say Mary, but he told me to say Colleen. So, to the world, 17 of Haverford, PA, has been named one of the top youth volunteers of Pennsylvania for 2017 in the 22nd Annual Prudential Spirit of Community Awards. More than 31,000 young people across the country participated in this year's program. And whereas, Colleen, a senior at Cardinal Ohio High School, is also a seasoned EMT who volunteers 12 hours a week with the Norbert Ambulance Service and a CPR training advocate who has organized a school training day reaching more than 650 students, and spoken at the State Capitol in support of mandatory CPR training after seeing the procedure save a 10-day-old baby, and now serves as an American Heart Association CPR advocate in schools. Now, therefore be proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, that said Board of Commissioners hereby congratulates Mary Colleen McCanns for your many selfless contributions to your community with your long hours and dedicated work. Our blessings go with you as you face new opportunities and challenges. Proclaimed this 13th day of March, 2017, Township of Haverford Board of Commissioners, Chris Connell Senior President, Mario Aliva Vice President.
Do you want me to take the picture? You want to get in the picture?
Get in there.
You look great.
Or Steve Al.
He's the other type of godfather.
He's the other godfather.
I think we're going to have to ask them to come back up. I've got the honor, the other day, State Representative Jamie Santoro came to my house. He was unable to make it tonight because of budget meetings in Harrisburg. So, Mary Colleen, if you'd come back up here, there's this proclamation for you from the House of Representatives, so your mom and dad can come back up, and even the godfather can come if you'd like.
Can we take a picture?
It's my opportunity to read this, since State Representative Santoro represents the first in the Ninth Ward, Steve's Ward, and Haverford as well. So, whereas the House of Representatives of Pennsylvania is always pleased to recognize the outstanding achievements realized by the young citizens of this nation, and whereas Mary Colleen McCanns is being honored by Prudential Financial in partnership with the National Association of Secondary School Principals with a 2017 Prudential Spirit of Community Award. And whereas a senior at Cardinal Ohio High School, Bill Lyons, Mary Colleen was chosen for this national award for extraordinary commitment to her community and his residence. An emergency medical technician who volunteers 12 hours a week with the Norbert Ambulance Service, she earned this award by organizing a CPR training day at her school that reached more than 650 students. She also spoke at the State Capitol in support of mandatory CPR training in schools. Mary Colleen has displayed an exceptional commitment to her fellow citizens due to her dedication, has used her considerable talents to serve others. Now therefore, the House of Representatives of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania congratulates Mary Colleen McCanns upon her well-deserved distinction, recognizes her outstanding record of volunteer service, pure leadership and community spirit, extends best wishes for continued success and happiness. And further directs that a copy of this citation, sponsored by the Honorable James R. Santoro, on February 17th, 2017, be transmitted to Mary Colleen McCanns at 502 Shelbourne Road, Haverford, Pennsylvania. Signed, James R. Santoro, sponsor. Mike Turzai, Speaker of the House, and attested to by David Redcliffe, Chief Clerk of the House of Representatives of Pennsylvania.
Mary Colleen, you are a wonderful example of women in the community. God bless you and just the best of luck in the future. Mr. Wexler, as the Library Commissioner, would you back to the podium? And if we could please have Christine Ferris?
Speaking of women that do a lot for the community, Christine, please come on. This is the second time I'm pleased to present this. On the 28th, we had the huge retirement sermon at the library, sponsored by the library staff and the friends of the library, to congratulate Christine on her retirement on her last day of work, February 28th. And the purpose of reading it tonight is so that the rest of the community gets to see and hear what Christine has done over the last, how many years?
25.
25 years here and there. So, whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania wishes to recognize and thank Haverford Township's phenomenal Haverford Township Library Director, Christine Ferris, for her unwavering service and dedication to the library and community. A brief listing of our accomplishments will explain why. Whereas when Christine first became Director, the Haverford, Marple, and Radnor Libraries were in a close race for the busiest libraries in Delaware County. The Haverford Township Free Library is easily the busiest and most popular library in Delaware County, with 5,000 more patrons crossing its threshold every month than its closest competitor. Whereas she established the Haverford Township Free Library as a force in the community, in the county, and in the state, she was Senator Dalens Leach's 2009 Librarian of the Year while strengthening the library's relationship with the Township Board of Commissioners. And she is widely recognized throughout the state for Haverford Township Free Library's leadership in the state's Pennsylvania Forward Program. And whereas she reached out with the library's involvement in community events like the First Friday Flick, Comic-Con, the Book Bites Luncheon, Haverford Township Day, the Haverford Music Festival, while also reaching out to the business community, starting the Business Breakfast for local business people, and embracing the Delaware County Business Leadership Academy. It is our privilege and certainly our honor to thank Christine Ferris for her many years of service and wish her an enjoyable retirement. Proclaimed this 28th day of February, 2017, the Township of Haverford Board of Commissioners, Chris Connell Senior President, Mario Aliva Vice President.
And I'd like to get a picture with the Library Board Commissioners. The gentlemen who are on that committee? Mr. Siegel?
I think you're on it there.
Go ahead, go ahead. Got to get up. You're on there too? You're on that committee? No.
First of all, I would like to say thank you to the Commissioners for this wonderful award. I certainly appreciate all of your support through the years. We've done some great things here together in Haverford Township. I'd also like to thank the first responders, the police, the EMTs, the firefighters, and all of the township staff who have supported the library, again, throughout the years. It has made my job easy, let me tell you. It's been remarkable. And I would also like to thank the Board of Trustees that I have worked with throughout the years, and also the community, who have appreciated the value of the library. We are an important resource in the community. And for all the organizations I have worked with, it has been a wonderful experience and adventure. So I thank you so very much for your support. Thank you.
Our next, let's see, still in proclamations, I would ask, please, that Mr. Andrew Howell from the Race for Peace, please come forward to the podium.
Good evening. Thank you to the Commissioners for allowing us to speak. My name's Hameen Diggs. I am the community liaison, as well as the youth director of the Race for Peace. I will briefly tell you exactly what that is. What it is, it's a committee that bridges the gap between police and community by having summits, community and police basketball games. And also, on the committee, we have officers from different counties, as well as politicians, community activists, and so forth, so that we will bridge the gap between the community and police, allowing people to see both sides. We're here today because one of our biggest guys, you know, that's on the committee, supports, does a whole lot, always there, you know, Mr. John Viola. Before we do that, I want to introduce everybody to the founder of the Race for Peace, Mr. Andrew Howell. Thank the Commissioners and everyone here tonight, you know, for allowing, the citizens for allowing your Chief of Police, John Viola, for participating in the Race for Peace. I'll read the certificate of appreciation presented to Chief John F. Viola, Haverford Township Police Department. Race for Peace Committee presents this certificate in recognition of your active participation and support in the mission of peace and humanity. And I'd just like to say that John is incredible, you know. There's a lot of things going on in our society today far as race, you know, discrimination. It's just an abundance of things that's just going on all around, you know. And I'd just like to thank the Commissioners for giving John permission to help us with our mission. And this guy, he's, every step of the way, every stride, he's right there with us. And I'd just like, God bless all of you. Thanks, John.
Just thank you. With his snow jacket.
Getting ready.
Yep. As soon as he goes, as soon as he takes it. Andrew called me, I guess, over the summertime. I had no idea who he was. Said he was a community activist. I was a little concerned because this guy calls me out of the blue, wanted to know if I could help. So I made some phone calls to some people lower Mary and made sure he was okay. But Andrew has done, well, you know what? You get somebody calls you out of the blue, wants you to be on a committee, you want to know what's going on. You don't walk headfirst and do a little research first. But what I found about Andrew, his heart's in the right place, and he's headed in the right direction. He wants us, as law enforcement and the communities, to work together. We understand what's going on in this world today, and we're all trying to make a better place. So, good job to you, Andrew. Thank you. Gentlemen, thank you very much. That concludes our presentations this evening and proclamations. And we will now, next on the agenda, are any Commissioner Committee updates?
Chris, if I just update, we'll publicly announce that we were the recipient of the $500,000 grant by the state. And we got our letter that Larry gave to us. But for those in the public that don't know, we, last year, as a board, voted to assist the library in preparing for that grant. They have won it, and our obligation is to match it. And so we got a $500,000 grant from the state for the library construction project, so.
And along with, as you said, with our matching, that's $1 million. Congratulations. And there was a lot of work put into that.
More than just a half a million dollar match.
Oh, I get it.
7.25 million. Was that match?
Okay. All right. Next on the agenda, we have the, oh, I'm sorry, anybody else there being none? Okay.
Sorry.
We have the Township Board at our update.
Good evening. I've reviewed the expenditures for the period commencing February 14th, 2017, and ending March 13th, 2017. I raised certain questions and asked for substantiation of certain expenses from our Township's Finance Director. All the answers and substantiation was provided to my satisfaction. Therefore, in my opinion, there are no irregularities for the period of questions. Thank you.
Okay, next on the list, we have Citizens Forum. These are 20 minutes registered speakers, 20 minutes agenda items. The first ones will be the registered speakers. And this evening, the first of our registered speakers will be Mr. Brooks with the upcoming Grange events, as it's listed here, and others.
Good evening. I do want to talk about the events, but first, I have some very sad news. The Treasurer of the Grange passed suddenly last week, Roy Santrum. He had been an integral part of the Grange for the last 10 years. A George Washington biography is entitled "The Indispensable Man." No one is irreplaceable, but sometimes the right person comes along at the right time, and at that moment, it becomes indispensable. For the Friends of the Grange, that indispensable man was Roy. He was treasurer, but that title doesn't begin to describe his efforts at preserving the Grange and its mission. He knew the house and its quirks and its needs better than anyone. He was the Grange at Haverford Township Day, Heritage Day, and the Music Festival. As for the grounds, he was the Grange, inheriting Mrs. Hopkins' love of the gardens and the horticulture of the property. I rarely visited the Grange without seeing him weeding, planting, and proving. Just last week, he posted a photo of the daffodils coming up all over the grounds, and he tweeted, "The daffodils are in bloom. Enjoy the weather, stroll the grounds, and walk in the footsteps of Washington. It's always gorgeous at the Grange." We are all heartbroken that Roy is no longer with us. It just has not seemed possible. Roy was the heart of the Grange. He gave himself freely and professionally. It would take many to replace all that he did. That was Bev Ruhr. The caring intellectualism that he brought to every decision made for the Grange was extraordinary. Anne Barnett. The Grange and Haverford Township lost a great man. He gave his time to making the Grange and the Township a better place. He will be missed by many. Rest in peace, Roy. Connor Quinn. In addition, I have the comment from, Roy was one of a kind, a creative, thoughtful, sensitive man with a wry sense of humor. He gave so much to the Grange, and his presence is felt here at every corner of the estate. I will miss him dearly. Kelly Anderson. And finally, Roy will be surely missed. He literally gave his heart and soul to the Grange. As a friend, I miss him so much already, and I haven't even been to the mansion yet. His loss is there, and we remind people, it will take many people to replace Roy. So you can see the common theme going through all the comments. They just sensed his presence, his power, his love of the property. So I just want to remember tonight, and I know we had a moment of silence, but we just have maybe 30 seconds to think of Roy and all he contributed. have maybe 30 seconds to think of Roy and all he contributed. And now, one of some more of the positive news, I think that Roy would love. We will be reopening on the 1st of April for tours. That weekend, there'll be attic treasure sales on both Saturday and Sunday, April 1st and April 2nd. We are closed for Easter, but on Arbor Day, there'll be a special remembrance of Ann Ackerman, who was certainly a force in the township, and Gloria Thinking, who was an important contributor to the Grange, to the Grange. On the 28th of April, there's a cleanup for Cobb's Creek. That was something that Roy was very deeply involved with, the Darby Creek cleanup. And I think we'll be doing a remembrance of him. There is a membership meeting that everyone is invited to on May 4th, and there'll be a special author there, the woman of Penns Woods. There'll be a Mother's Day brunch this year, and there, you should get in now, you should check on the website and get, because the seating will be limited. We will be present at Heritage Day. There'll be a special Father's Day celebration on the 17th of June. Celebrate that with beer, bands, and barbecue. There'll be a picnic with George on Friday, June 30th, a picnic with George Washington. And I think this will be a lot of wine. It's right before the 4th of July weekend. So if you can come, please come for that. I understand that the person representing George Washington does a fantastic job for that. Through the summer, they have camp for kids. You can check that out online. They have the Christmas show for kids online. So I made up enough programs for all the commissioners this year. And please think of that and think of what we're coming for, and the importance of this property in the history of the Grange and what we did. So, thank you all for your attention, and please give it a care. If you, we will need people in the Grange going forward. Please, if you have people who are interested, come and tell them to participate. Thank you.
Excuse me, sir. Can I just say, Jim?
Aye.
I just wanted to say something about Roy, Chad. Roy was a, something you didn't mention was his, working for tree tenders. He helped us with tree tenders to plant a lot of trees. It was a great love of his. He got involved with us and was, you know, he's going to be sorely missed on those tree planting days.
As I was about to say, I want to just take, I know it's a little unorthodox, but I just want to take this time that, to ask any commissioner, since Roy was very close to many of us, say, ask any commissioner if they would like to add any words.
Yes. Thank you, Chris. I'd like to add some words. Like, nobody can say it better than Chad Brooks just said it, as far as Roy Sandstrom. It would take five of us to do what he did. And that's probably one of the reasons why he's not with us any longer. But the fact is that, just a great mom. Fran was down there the other day when we went, and she stood at the path where Roy always came down. And Roy used to communicate with Fran a lot because she was, did the minutes and go to all the meetings. And Roy would say, now, don't forget Fran, get this, get this. Roy was very meticulous in the way he did things. And basically, she stood there crying because Roy wasn't coming down the path. And again, as Chad said, it would take five people to replace Roy, and we could really use the help down there, because I don't even think you can replace Roy. That's my personal opinion. God bless him, he did a hell of a job, and he's a great man.
Anyone else?
There'll be further information on Roy. We haven't gotten it back from his brother yet, but we're in contact with him, and he's going to call us back as to the arrangements and all.
Mr. Rexler?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure where Roy got all the time, but he was very involved with the Hilltop Civic Association, helping the board there, guiding them, giving advice, working on some of the events with the Debbie Sapolos of the world. And he just, just a man that gave all of his time to this township. I can't say enough what a guiding light he was for the young women that have taken over the board at the Hilltop Civic Association, his sage advice, his attention to detail, his help with their finances, just, just a great guy. And it's a, it's a sad day of his passing, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say what a gentleman he was. He was always, he was such a, you meet him anywhere, and he always made time to talk to you, and, you know, what a, what a loss for this township. It's a huge loss, someone who volunteered as much as he did and cared as much as he did. All I can think of is what a gentleman he was. He'll be missed.
Thank you very much, Mr. D'Amelio.
Mr. President, I think the measure of all of us at the end of our lives is going to be whether or not we made a difference in that by being here, we made the world a better place. And I, just listening to all of this reminds us that, that Roy satisfied that test, and he leaves our township better for having known him and for having benefited from his, his very sincere dedication to all the tasks he undertook. And that was obvious to anyone who interacted with him, and, and he will be missed.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, gentlemen, for your comments. Simply put, God bless him. Next on the, on the Citizens Forum, we have Mr. Ross, keeping Harford Township friendly and national tensions. Thank you very much for coming. Just your, and your address, please.
Hey, my name is Ross Anderson, of 220 Heatherwood Road. I'm also the guy that you know as the one who's, you always see, running with a backpack gun up and down Eagle Road and also Monoa Road, although I no longer do that, I have a new job, so I'm the guy in the bike, biking up to Ardmore every day to take a train. But that's me. But I'm here to, you know, to speak of some general concerns I have, some, I feel the tension that everybody has felt since the election and all the fears that, all the hype. And, you know, the federal government is currently dividing people and creating a lot of tension and a lot of stress. I hear a lot of rhetoric that is hateful, wrong, or just outright fake. I personally feel, but I personally felt that much of this is kind of overblown with fears about illegal immigrants and terrorism. And some of it almost seems manufactured, to the point where it's even causing families harm, you know, like these tribal bands are dividing up families. And now you have situations like in Los Angeles where a child goes to school, and then her mom, after they drop off, gets picked up by ICE. And then, so there's no mom to pick up the kid in the afternoon. So that's a bad situation for the school just to deal with. And I really feel for those parents. I also feel for the LGDP, LGDP community, who always seems to be picked on, and especially for the transgender who just, you know, the, the administration's clearly not with their favor, given that they just rolled back the guidance from the Obama administration regarding to transgender bathroom use. But, you know, I am proud that, you know, our community is a very welcoming community here. You know, I'm proud that we have a non-discrimination ordinance and that also Delaware County is a sanctuary county. And I hope that saves it away, I hope it stays that way, and I hope that we can stay a very welcoming community. You know, I have neighbors that have Trump signs next to neighbors that have love-Trump states or Hillary Clinton signs, and, you know, we're open to that. Now, I don't know how much those neighbors get along, but, you know, we are a very open and welcoming community, and I hope we stay that way. That's all.
Thank you very much. Next on the list is Dr. Levin.
Thank you, Mr. Connell. I want to address the 10th ordinance reading that, number 10 on the agenda tonight, which is to further amend and supplement Chapter 111 Littering by Amending Littering Regulations. My comment is this. A couple of years ago, I sat before the, this committee, and I brought up the fact that there were cigarettes all over the lawns and in the streets, and I couldn't see how smoking was being regulated in any sensible fashion. Well, last week, or last month, at the February meeting, the commissioners passed the first reading of the 11th ordinance. Two readings are required for passage. This week is the second reading. The littering question consists of weekly advertisers from participating businesses delivered in a plastic bag to lawns or private residences in Harverhood. On windy days, those advertisers, to some degree, were dispersed either from some of those bags or from recycling containers. It is not clear which and never explained, and scattered widely in the same, in some wards. Rather than cause the wrappers and other papers to be secured and waste papers to be bundled prior to collection, this ordinance would outlaw the placement of advertisers on launch. Why not regulate cigarette butts all over the place? Handling the problem as a special case to stop delivery of advertisers is inappropriate, if not unlawful. It would deprive our residents of current products, such as food, medicine, and specialties offered by merchants. About 17,000 residences would be affected. Effectively, this would blind our residents to knowledge of the, of the, of the products produced. It is unreasonable to distribute postal mailings of this information due to cost, but this was never brought up. Steps were taken to ensure managers of businesses in Havertown, who were invited to take this action that the commissioners are likely to take seriously if the current distribution system continues. You may be hearing from them as well. I visited several of them, and they were quite surprised to be invited into this township to do business and then told, you're not going to do any advertising. It is suggested that this ordinance be canceled, if not voted down, because it does nothing for the residents of this community that cannot be done by other means, as Larry Holmes, Commissioner, said. Assuredly, Harverhood already has a littering ordinance. It does not require a special case that would cost businesses more to deliver their product information. We all know that additional costs would be passed on to you, the residents, in higher prices. I hope that you will reconsider this. I cannot believe that three lawyers, as well as a solicitor who said that this is probably unlawful, voted for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Levin. Next on the agenda, we have 20 minutes of agenda items. Anybody that wishes to come forward and speak for three minutes may do so on agenda items. So, anybody from on this side of the room, first row, second row, third row? But I, I, okay. And just, please start off with name and address and go right into your...
My name is Mark Goldman. I live at 704 Lawson Avenue. I'm in the 8th Ward. I am up here because I am a member of this community about two and a half years now. My wife is from North Dakota. I'm from Denver, Colorado. We've been out here about 15 years. We ended up buying a house in Havertown. One of the things that drew us to it, the schools, the community, especially the neighborhood we live in, we're finding that it is becoming a younger community, flipping with a lot more young families. And to us, the safety of the children and all of that are very important, and it seems that this community, especially the commission, care very much about that. And I'm very thankful for all of the work that all of you do. It's much appreciated. But also, I want to raise a point that somebody else just made about the tension with the political climate. And what I just, I guess, want to say is that I hope that, as a commission, you'll put township over party first, because I think that is the most important thing right now, because we have children, we all live here, we love this community. And again, like I said, one of the things that brought us to this community is the fact that there's so many great families here. And again, thank you for all the work you do. Just wanted to speak my mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldman. Third row, back row. On this side of the room, front row, second row, third row. Who's that? Please. And again, we just asked that you start with your name and address, and then...
My name is Andrew Arso, and I live at 125 West Eagle Road. I just ran in here because I would like to know what is going to happen, who is responsible for Eagle Road and the terrible condition it's in, and when something's going to happen. There's potholes, there's, it's just a mess. I've lost two tires now. I don't even care about that. There's grinding machines out there at 2:00 in the morning, there's cones all over, there's signs, but there's construction. Nothing ever gets done, and I want to know when. I called the state, I have Pico's phone number, and I have a couple of the executives there on my cell phone, speed dial. I'm sick of getting, I talked to the contractor, I've been out there at 2:00 in the morning. I want to know what's going on and when it's going to be completed, and when you're going to be able to drive down there safely. Does anybody have any information about it?
We'll answer once we're done. Okay.
That's my comment.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in that row? Back row.
Hello, I'm Kelly Wallace. I live at 701 Powder Mill Lane. I'm here as a last resort, because I cannot seem to get any response from the township whatsoever. Last April 3rd, which I'm coming up on a year ago now, a tree fell across Monoa Road, and that tree was cut down and taken away, mostly, by the township, Public Works. They flipped the root back up onto the sidewalk, so that I cannot fix the sidewalk now on Monoa Road until that root gets removed. I was taken to court. When I made this a big issue with the township, they responded by issuing me a citation for code's violation. I was taken to court, and I was found not guilty, because the judge looked at it and recognized that there's nothing I can do until that tree stump gets removed. I have been bounced between the state and PennDOT, and I've worked with several people there, and the township really has not responded at all, except to say, it's not our responsibility. And the fact that the tree was completely in the street and then flipped back up onto the sidewalk makes it your responsibility. I need help getting it removed. It is a highly trafficked area there. People are walking to Penfield Station, kids are riding their bikes around that corner, and I need it to be addressed. So I am happy to do my responsibility and fix the sidewalk, which I have been trying to do now for the better part of a year. But I've had to drop everything and come here, because it's the only way I can get attention, to say, guys, I need your help. Like, we do all live in this township, and we have to make it safe for people. I came home one day from work, and kids are doing wheelies to see how high they can get off of the uneven sidewalk, and it's not cool. Like, it's not cool for the kids, it's not cool for the pedestrians who are trying to get to the train station, or the park, or taking a walk around the block and get there safely. So I need some resolution, and I'm happy to stay after this meeting to get it. But, you know, the judge has already said, let them issue another citation. I'm happy to have the township back in my courtroom. So I, I'd rather do this in a nice way, but it's coming up on a year, and I don't know what else to do. And you can hear my level of frustration, and it's, it's, it's getting worse. So any action you can take with our Public Works Department to get them to come remove that tree stump would be appreciated, so that I can fix the rest of the sidewalk and people can be safe again, walking, walking along Monoa Road. It's too busy for them to walk in the street. There's too much traffic. We tried to coordinate off, and people would rip down the, you know, the warning signs because they... because they'd rather take the chance of walking on an uneven sidewalk than take the chance of walking in that insane traffic coming around that curb. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace.
Yeah, that would be Judge LaCianca. Well, that's hard. Yeah, she's right. Yeah, she's definitely right.
On the, Mr. Ross, thank you, or Mr. Anderson, thank you very much for your comments concerning the situations that are occurring here in the United States and in local areas. Dr. Levin, thank you very much for your comments opposing the proposed ordinance for littering. It will come up in the agenda this evening, and we will have a discussion on it.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I did get called out by name on that, so I just think the public needs to realize that littering ordinance only affects, is only effective for anybody who specifically asks not to have stuff delivered to their house, either by mail, or they put a sign up in their lawn. So we certainly are not prohibiting the distribution of handbills or advertisements or anything like that in the township. We're simply instructing that once a handbill distributor is so instructed not to go to a certain house, they're not to do it. And that's, that's pretty reasonable, and my three years of law school and 23 years of practice don't tell me otherwise, so.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
I don't know. I can, I can address. Well, first of all, that ordinance does not do what Dr. Levin said. The ordinance does not prohibit anyone from distributing handbills, flyers from stores. And if you read it, you will see that it does just the opposite. It continues our policy in this township of allowing them, but permits a resident, if the resident desires, to either register with the town, no, no, we didn't even put that in. Register with the company who distributes them, or puts a sign up that says, don't distribute. If you are like most residents, you're probably not going to do that, because if you're like me, you want those items. But if you don't, you have that option. It is not a ban. What I said that I would not support is if it had any impact on political or other organizations, which are First Amendment protected. But I certainly never said what was attributed or generally attributed to me, and in a sense of accuracy, I suggest that the residents read the ordinance. Everything's going to continue status quo unless you request a change, and I suspect it will be a small percentage of residents at most who will.
Anything further?
From our third lawyer on the panel here?
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Chris, how do you prevent, in Dr. Levin's case, and I'm just throwing this out there, of other people taking a paper, like kids going to school, and throwing it up on a person's property that's there? Paper man never threw it up there, but the kids throw it up there.
Discuss this in the.
I mean, just for an example, as one thing, if you look at the mailings that we do in the township, Larry, how many come back to the township as no forwarding address, abandoned houses, stuff like that? What do you do in that case?
A lot of them come back. Some of them that come back, actually, we keep for new people that move in, and they can get them for the trash calendar. But as far as, I get nothing from an advertisement. Any of that comes to the township? None of that comes to the township.
No, no, I'm just pointing that out, that how many places are abandoned out there, or kids would come along, and because they don't like that neighbor over there, they take the paper and throw it on his property, because they know he or she doesn't like the paper. I'm just pointing that kind of stuff out. Now, it's not the paper people's fault that that happens, but they're the ones that are going to get the blame for it.
Yeah, we should be discussing.
Now, on the other hand, what I suggested was the rubber band to put it around the paper, let it go to the home. They have an address right on the advertising of the newspaper of the number to call if you don't want the paper.
Mr. Chairman, why don't we?
Hey, thank you. Take it under consideration. We'll talk about it, Chairman.
Yeah, well, like I said before, that we'll bring it up under discussion.
Yeah, under number 10.
When we bring it up, number 10. Thank you, gentlemen. 11, 10, 11, whatever it takes.
It is 10.
Yeah. First time it's been wrong. Thank you very much for your comments about the community becoming younger, and thank you for your words of heed over township over party. And I'm sure, there are several commissioners that practice that right now.
Several?
What's that?
I think there are more than several, but that's all right.
More than a majority. Let's say that.
Well, I would say all of us, I know I have, okay? So I'm speaking just for myself. I'm sure any other commissioner can say the same.
Again, I do also.
Ms. Wallace, as far, the tree goes as far as the removal. Now, I thought we had gone, we went through this last year?
We did, we did.
Can we, can we get that removed?
I'll be glad to talk to Mrs. Wallace.
Can we do it?
But, so you understand, it is definitely, the township on a state highway, it's a courtesy for the township to come and remove the tree. In most cases, we don't even remove the debris. We push it to the side of the road. So we do that as a courtesy, because PennDOT, their response for PennDOT to come out is, at times, it could even take a day, and that road would be shut down. And no, and I'm in this position nine years, but I've been with the township since 1978. At no time has the township removed stumps anywhere in the township, even on a township road. I believe, and again, I can't quote, but I believe that we sent you a letter saying that we would help you in that situation, remove the stump, but you would have to sign a letter releasing the township from any liability if anybody does fall. That is your, that is your curbing sidewalk. If you sign that, we will do our very best to come out before the end of the, end of the month to try to remove that.
My, I hired a lawyer, and she advised me not to sign that, and the reality is that...
You shouldn't be talking about this anymore.
Yeah, you know what? We can't go back and forth, but if you'd like, hate to have you wait till the end of the session, but if you'd like, we can absolutely discuss it at the end of the meeting. Okay?
I don't think we can.
It should be discussed privately.
Okay.
It should be discussed privately.
Yeah, it's a legal matter.
I did suggest that a few minutes ago. And then they said, oh, no, you should discuss it right here in the open. Okay. So now I'm saying, yes, we'll discuss it after the meeting.
In private. Can't win tonight, can you, Chris?
Oh, you bet.
Sound convincing coming out of you, Mr. Connell.
Let's actually use that.
See how bipartisan he is?
Oh, my gosh. Oh, my gosh. How about that?
More diverse every day.
Yeah. Ms. Dawson, you had the situation with Eagle Road. All right, we've been in contact with PennDOT.
Numerous times. Eagle Road, unfortunately, is a state highway. The township has no jurisdiction over the state. It is, okay. But let me finish, let me finish, please. Okay, we all were, we received the same information you do. A lot of time, it's inconsistent. It's a, it's a, it's being managed by the Public Utility Commission. Pico and Aqua deal directly with the PennDOT. We have no authority over the road. The only thing that we know that sometime when weather breaks, you can't get blacktop now anyway, sometime in the spring, when the weather breaks and the blacktop plants open up, PennDOT has authorized Pico to go ahead and do a mill and overlay for half of the road, not all of the road is being done. And that is, it's a PennDOT issue. We've been asking PennDOT, we pleaded with PennDOT to have that road paved, including multiple roads within the, within the township. And the only thing that that's going to, the only paving that's going to happen on Eagle Road is when the weather breaks, is half of that road where Pico opened up and did the work. And that's, that's the only thing that we know.
They were done. And again, nobody's responsible, but I hear you. I always say...
Is there a date on that?
No.
No, there is no finished date.
State nor Pico will give us a date, because they can't give us a date. They don't know when the plants are going to open up.
Well, Larry, just, just to follow up on that, I mean, Pico fully, I mean, they came to this meeting, and they fully expect, accept responsibility for the work that was done on Eagle Road. And at this, it's not, it's not an issue of passing the buck. I mean, Pico acknowledges that they did the work, and they're responsible for it. The issue right now is, and we're about to have a snowstorm, that's whatever degrees it is outside, it's below freezing, so you can't pave the road right now. There was a temporary pave put down for the winter. As soon as the weather breaks, that road will be paved the half. And I assure you, I assure you that I share every frustration of everyone who deals with Eagle Road, and Larry and the township and myself are in constant contact with Pico and PennDOT to try to speed up the process, but there's only so much we can do when we're not controlling the work ourselves. Now, in the interest of full disclosure, I think it's also important, since we're talking about Eagle Road, to point out that we, the township has recently been informed, it wasn't our decision, it wasn't, they didn't ask us for our opinion, that the work will now be extended from Darby to St. Dennis Lane. That will be hopefully after the portion of the road of Eagle Road from Eagle, from Darby to the Y is paved. And this township shares everyone's frustration with the road. At the same time, these are necessary improvements that Pico is telling us need to be required to be done. I think we have to take them on their word, given the fact that Pico is the electric and gas company, that updates need to be done. And we'll have to, it's going to be an inconvenience, it's going to be frustrating, and we will do everything we can to speed the process along. But that is all we can do.
And it's the same project that was on Manoa Road and...
And I would say that if you, if you drive anywhere in Delaware County, or if you drive anywhere, if you go over into Wynwood and Narberth, the same type of project is being done by Pico all over the area. So it's not, it's not just us. Unfortunately, it is one of our main roads that's being done, which sort of highlights it for us. But it's, it's on Wynwood Road, it's in various roads in Narberth. I mean, this is, this is a major project that Pico is doing for upgrades, for the services that they provide. So just to jump in, sorry.
Basically, the town's got nothing to do with Pico.
Correct.
We can't force, we can't force a state permit, a state project, to go faster or to finish it in a different way, because they have that, by that contract, they have to address it the way the contract says. Would we like to have it fixed? Absolutely. And you wouldn't have to come to the meeting. And when we drive down Darby Road, same thing happens with my car. I get it. I get it. And then it comes up, and it nicks the paint, and what have you. If the tire blows, I got to take the tire and have it fixed.
I've had two of them blow.
So, and they're not, we are held by the same rules as you have. We'd absolutely love to have it fixed, but hopefully it will be this spring when they do it.
We can certainly reach out to our state representatives and our state senator.
And it's not as if we haven't done it before.
Yeah, and we could do it again. I mean, say, we've got people coming to our meetings, we've got civilians getting their tires blown and holes.
I think that, I think that the state...
Do it again.
You know, the, people need to contact the state representative, too, and put pressure on the state representatives, so that, so that we can get Eagle Road done, because, you know, it's ridiculous. It really is.
But they take our call faster than they take other calls.
They would, and but I, I would, I would urge, I would urge people to contact their state representative.
What are the names? What should we, what should the county think? I know it's not you. I'm just frustrated.
We understand your frustration.
Everybody on the street is the same way.
I'm sure the other commissioners will, and I will contact our representative tomorrow about Eagle Road. I will get his chief of staff, who is a very lovely person, and she will probably get back to me, hopefully within the same day. Thank you. Anybody have anything else? All right. I think we did everybody. Okay. Mr. D'Amelio, item number seven on the approval of the minutes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of March 13, 2017.
Second. Seconded by Mr. D'Amelio.
Mr. Aliva.
Mr. Aliva, any comment? Take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
McCloskey?
Yes.
Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarretty?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Lea?
Yes.
Mr. Connell.
Yes. Item number eight, approval of the warrants. Mr. Holmes?
Mr. President. Mr. President, I move we approve warrant number three of 2017 totaling $3,537,423.67, comprising the general sewer fund payroll for February 9, 2017, in the amount of $611,239.79. The general sewer fund payroll for February 23, 2017, in the amount of $624,870.14. General fund disbursements number three of 2017, in the amount of $869,457.75. Sewer fund disbursements number three of 2017, in the amount of $534,248.61. Community development block grant fund disbursement number three of 2017, in the amount of $35,850.48. Home grant fund number three of 2017, in the amount of $52,487.50. Capital projects fund disbursement number three of 2017, in the amount of $806,400.34. And finally, a credit card statement ending February 27, 2017, in the amount of $2,869.06.
Second.
Mr. President, our township auditor has reviewed the warrants. Any questions that have been raised by him have been answered to his satisfaction by our finance director and other staff members of the township. It is his recommendation that we approve the warrants, and I accept his recommendation and recommend to all of you that you do the same.
Any discussion? There being none, take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarretty?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell.
Yes. Item number nine, ordinance P-1, 2017 on animal control. Mr. Siegel?
Mr. President, motion to amend, no, sorry, motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P-1, 2017, amending and supplementing ordinance number 1960, adopted June 30, 1986, and known as the general laws of the township of Havertown, further amending and supplementing chapter 49 animals.
Second. Seconded by Mr. D'Amelio. Comment? Discussion? There being none, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarretty?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Connell.
Yes. And I'd just like to let people know who are out there now, that this is not the first time we're seeing this. This has been in front of us now for quite some time. So sometimes when I hear some comments or anything, just so that you know, I go right to the roll call, it's because if there isn't a discussion, there isn't a discussion.
The discussion took place.
It has already been discussed.
Work session and first reading.
Ordinance number, number 10. We have P-2, 2017 on litter control.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Siegel.
Motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P-2-2017, further amending and supplementing chapter 111, littering by amending littering regulations.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Aliva. Open to discussion.
Did we kill this one today?
I think we discussed it.
I'll just correct, I mean, it's a comment earlier, since I didn't, when Mario asked about the other lawyer to comment. I'll just say, for my own reasons, I did vote no on this last time, so I don't want that to indicate, my upcoming vote is, was, was not changed. It will remain consistent. Thank you.
There being nothing further, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
No.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarretty?
I agree with Commissioner McCloskey. I'm not a lawyer, but no.
Mr. Wexler?
Bipartisan shift brings tears to the eyes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Provisions for Restoration Services Providers.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lewis. Discussion? Comments? There being none, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell.
Yes. Item number 12, it carries. Item number 12, ordinance P-42017, which is also the new charter for code book.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. D'Amelio. Before I read this, I want to thank the chief for helping with this adopting of this resolution, or ordinance rather, did a great job with it. New chapter for code book, adding provisions for restoration service providers, second reading, motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P-42017, amending and supplementing ordinance number 1960, adopted June 30, 1986, and known as the general laws of the township of Haverford, is further amended by adding provisions for restoration services providers.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Aliva.
Mr. President?
Mr. Holmes?
It is worth following, in Commissioner D'Amelio's vein there, that we should remind folks what we're doing here. This is, this is an ordinance and changes to our code that are, that are designed to protect people at their most vulnerable and most fragile time while they're standing on perhaps their own sidewalk, watching their house burn, or after they've suffered a tree falling through it, or some other disaster.
Right. And the chief was there, as the chief of
Right. And, and our chief and our other, you know, first responders have seen numerous times where folks, perhaps who aren't the most scrupulous business people, take advantage of these folks and sign them up for services and what they call restoration service that, 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 you know, after a day or two to calm down and people having the chance to, you know, look at other bids and other opportunities may not fall prey to the same kind of adhesive contracts that folks deal with when they're, right, when they're in the, the heat of the moment. So it's, it's worth noting, this is a very strong ordinance and changes to our code to protect our, our citizens from, you know, from some, not, not everybody, but some unscrupulous providers.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask the chief a question? Would you mind coming up for a second, chief? I think to, I guess, go a little further with what Commissioner Holmes is saying, if someone has obviously a devastating fire, they should contact their homeowner's insurance. Wouldn't they direct them on what to do next, or?
Yes, so we
Just so the public knows, you don't have to sign something.
Have companies that we call through Fire Board and Delcom, which is our 911 center for our dispatch purposes. And I'll make sure that they get their licenses updated with the new ordinance. But they are reputable, two reputable companies that the whole county does use. They come out and they're, they're usually represented by the insurance company, will reimburse or allow them to proceed with it. So we have two companies we do call on a regular basis that are reputable companies. So if we call somebody for the homeowner, you can rest assured that they'll be safe with that.
Very good. Thank you so much, chief, for your work on this.
Anybody else? Mr. Secretary?
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
McCloskey?
Yes.
Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell.
Yes. Item number 13 is a resolution for the annual transfer of funds. Mr. Holmes?
Mr. President, I move we adopt resolution number 2041 of 2017, authorizing the transfer of the 2016 funds.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wexler.
This, this is something that has a, obviously, it has a zero effect in terms of finances. We're just taking, I believe, finance director, correct me if I have this wrong, these are funds left over in certain areas that have been transferred into the 2017 budget. There are certain areas in our 2016 budget where we show some expenditure increases, as again, where there are other areas where we could show expenditure decreases. But this is already factored into the 2017 budget that we adopted back at the end of 2016. And this is just the final ministerial act of approving our, because it's enough money that we need to approve at the board level, the township, the finance director, taking those funds from '16 and applying them toward the '17 budget.
Thank you very much.
One worth noting, and I think it might have jinxed us, was a $122,000 decrease in snow removal. So, sorry about that, folks. We should have maybe done that in April, but
Right. I think the whole thing overall was 247,000.
Yeah.
Zero to zero.
It's almost
Mr. Siegel?
Now, it's almost exactly a year since the last big storm, so it's sort of
Yeah, I reminded everybody, we had a biggie in '93. And, you know, March is not, it doesn't always go out like a lamb. And, you know, if tonight is, nobody's lying.
Yeah, last year, right around this time, we had 20, 28 snow. But the good thing about March snow, late March snow, is that it goes way fast.
Those are way fast, but it falls on trees that started budding early. So I'm a little concerned. We are concerned. I mean, people should be very careful. I would save this to the end of the meeting, be very careful tomorrow because, you know, the, the trees, the branches aren't as light as they were in January, and this is going to be a heavy snow. So if you already know you've got a bad tree in your yard, don't put your car underneath it.
Yeah, and power lines.
Don't send your kids outside to play under it till this is all over.
Power lines coming down, things like that. There's going to be a lot of issues with this. And the wind too, 40 mile an hour winds.
The end result is that the budget is balanced. Thank you, Mrs. Cuthbertson. Please take the roll.
D'Amelio?
Yes.
McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell.
Yes. Resolution for Caricon Drive, Mr. Lewis?
Resolution. You got it?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, Mario.
Motion to adopt resolution number 2042, 2017, authorizing Chief John Viola to execute any documents with PA DOT and be responsible for safety and welfare of residents utilizing Caricon Drive commencing Sunday and only on Sunday, April 23, from 7:00 a.m. to dusk and ending Sunday, November 5, 2017.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McGarrett. Comment?
Mr. President?
Mr. Holmes?
Do we take into account the one annual event at Caricon Swim Club? They have a, they have a big
They have a triathlon.
They have a triathlon.
Yes.
So do we work around that, or is that just not on a Sunday?
That's, that's a separate permit?
They do that for the other side by the swim club. It doesn't affect
Oh, so it's not part of the, okay.
That one that.
All right, great.
Anything further? Please take the roll.
D'Amelio?
Yes.
McCloskey?
Yes.
Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes. Mr. Wexler, resolution for the Delaware County Hazard Hazmat?
President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2043-2017, approving the Delaware County 2016 Hazard Mitigation Plan, and the respective officials and agencies identified in the implementation strategy of the Delaware County 2016 Hazard Mitigation Plan are hereby directed to implement the recommended activities assigned to them.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. D'Amelio. You got it out first?
Yeah, he got it out first.
Comment? There being none, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes. Item number 16, any attendant, or is it contract awards?
Number two, heating oil and gasoline, 87 octane. Motion to award the number two heating oil contract under CoStarz contract vendor ID 104364. Excuse me. TW contract 4400013242 from Superior Plus Philadelphia Office Daily Average Day of Delivery plus .2575 per gallon plus any applicable taxes.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Aliva. Comment? Discussion? And that's for our delivery for, and that's CoStarz, and that's heating oil and gasoline for the township. There being none, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell.
Yes. Continuation of item number 16 is the, also a second motion.
Okay, motion to award gasoline 87 octane under CoStarz contract vendor ID 104364. TW contract 4400 triple zero 13242, and TT contract 4600015326 from Superior Plus Philadelphia Optus Daily Average Day of Delivery plus .2000 per gallon TW plus any applicable taxes, a rate of .1100 will be used for the TT deliveries.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Aliva. Comments? Question, there being none, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
I'm sorry, yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes.
Okay, CDBG and State Home Program and County Contracts, Consultant Dunleavy Associates. Motion to approve the recommendation of Dunleavy Associates to provide counseling services for the Haverford Township CDBG and State Home Program and County Contracts.
It's consulting, just to clear that up.
Okay, and that's the Community Development Block Grant Program. And it's seconded by
Second.
Mr. Wexler?
Okay.
And gentlemen, any further discussion?
Dunleavy Associates has certainly done a good job for the last dozen years I've been here, so.
Yeah, they do a great job.
There being none, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes. Lead base paint, Mr. McGarrett?
Lead base paint, Leadco Environmentalist Incorporated. Motion to approve the recommendation of Leadco Environmental Incorporated to perform lead-based paint testing services under the Housing Rehabilitation Program.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Aliva. Comments?
We worked with Leadco before, Larry.
Yes, we've been using them.
And they did this time?
Yes.
Were there, were there other bids? Was there one other bid or no?
I believe there was.
All right, okay. Nothing further? Please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes. Item number 17, appointment Civil Service Commission, six-year term on an alternate. Gentlemen, the floor is open.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. D'Amelio?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Christopher LaRario to serve on the Civil Service Commission for a six-year term to expire December 31, 2022.
Christopher LaRario, LaRario?
I'm going to second that.
And it's seconded by Mr. Lewis.
Mr. President?
Siegel?
Motion to appoint Phil Goldsmith to serve on the Civil Service Commission for a six-year term to expire December 31, 2022.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McCloskey, and that was for Phil Goldsmith.
Yes.
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion to close by Mr. D'Amelio, and seconded by Mr. McGarrett. Gentlemen, please answer with the name of the individual you choose. Please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Mr. LaRario.
McCloskey?
Mr. Goldsmith.
Mr. Siegel?
Mr. Goldsmith.
Mr. Lewis?
Mr. LaRario.
Mr. Holmes?
Uh, Mr. Goldsmith.
Mr. McGarrett?
Mr. LaRario.
Mr. Wexler?
Mr. LaRario.
And Mr. Aliva?
Mr. LaRario.
And Mr. Connell.
Mr. LaRario. Congratulations, Mr. LaRario. Environmental Advisory Committee, this is a two-years appointment, and this is for Ward Six.
It is, and I have to once again pass, I have passed this person who's been recommended to me. We've not gotten in touch with one another. If it were a one-year term, I'd be really embarrassed, but since it is a two-year term, I don't regret waiting the extra time and making sure this person wants to do it. They come highly recommended and qualified.
Very good. Thank you very much. Ice Rink Advisory Board for a three-year term. Gentlemen, take a motion?
Mr. President, I'd make a motion to appoint Hope Seelig to fill the, an unexpired three-year term on the Ice Rink Advisory Board to expire December 31, 2018.
Seelig.
Second. Okay, Hope Seelig, is that correct? Yep, and it's by Mr. McCloskey, and seconded by Mr. Siegel.
If we close the nominations?
There being nothing else, thank you very much.
Close the nominations.
Second.
All right. Take the roll, please.
D'Amelio?
Seelig.
Hope Seelig?
Seelig.
Seelig.
Like Bud?
Like Bud, like the
The former baseball commissioner, yeah.
But Seelig.
Mr. McCloskey?
Miss Seelig.
Mr. Siegel?
Ms. Seelig.
Mr. Lewis?
Ms. Seelig.
Mr. Holmes?
Ms. Seelig.
Mr. McGarrett?
Hope Seelig.
Mr. Wexler?
Hope Seelig.
Mr. Aliva? Mr. Aliva?
Ms. Seelig.
And Mr. Connell?
Ms. Hope Seelig. Congratulations, Ms. Seelig. All right, Senior Senate Advisory Board, we have a one-year appointment for the first.
Well, I was going to hopefully try to fill that tomorrow, Wednesday, but Larry Holmes jinxed me by having his meeting tonight before.
Well, mine's canceled.
Now we have a blizzard.
Yeah, now we have a blizzard, so.
So.
Going to get to that new business.
Okay, I'm going to have to table this.
Okay.
I don't think any seniors are coming out Wednesday. Hopefully.
Very good, okay. Next on the agenda is the Vacancy Committee, one-year term. Open to motions?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Rob Turco to fill the unexpired one-year term on the Vacancy Committee to expire December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McGarrett, and the name is Mr. Rob Turco, correct?
T-U-R-C-O.
Can we just do it by affirmation?
Pardon me?
We did?
No. Motion to close.
Motion to close?
Motion to close.
And second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Mr. Turco.
Mr. McCloskey?
Mr. Turco.
Mr. Siegel?
Mr. Turco.
Uh, Mr. Lewis?
Mr. Turco.
Mr. Holmes?
Mr. Turco.
Uh, Mr. McGarrett?
Mr. Turco.
Mr. Wexler?
Mr. Turco.
And Mr. Aliva?
Mr. Turco.
And, uh, Mr. Connell?
Mr. Turco, congratulations, Mr. Turco, on your one-year term. And now open the floor back up to the continuation of Citizens' War for Non-Agenda Items. Side of the room? First row? Second row? Third row? Come on up? Sorry, just had to.
Uh, David Freed, 548 Washington Avenue. Um, just want to, I, this is all rumor, so I don't know if it's true or not, but, um, I heard from a neighbor who lives over in Virginia that there's consideration, I think Mr. D'Amelio reached out to his constituents, but there's rumor of considering, uh, the tennis courts in Bailey Park for a skateboard park. I don't know if there's any truth to that or not, I wanted to check with Jimmy, too.
None at all?
No, no.
I haven't heard a thing about that.
Eight parts going down at Murray Place.
That's what I thought, too, so, I, it freaked everybody out on the street, so I thought I'd run over real fast and say hi to everybody. But, that's good to know, anyway, see ya.
I heard it's going to be right in front of your house.
I feel compelled to speak on behalf of the skateboarders, I can assure you, it wouldn't have been like a Viking horde attacking your neighborhood. They're all pretty good kids, and I think we've seen them and their, and the teacher from Haverford who's, um, uh, who's very dedicated to channeling their energies, um, these kids, uh, spent a lot of their own time and their own money building the original skateboard park, um, and wherever they end up, I, I, I know that that teacher has staked his professional reputation, um, on the conduct of, of those kids, and so, um, they may not end up in your neighborhood, but whatever neighborhood they end up in, I, I, I think everyone can feel pretty assured that they're going to be good neighbors and they're going to respect the town.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Next row?
I was a skateboarder when I was a kid, so.
On this side of the room? Second row? Last row? Thank you very much, and next on the agenda, and gentlemen, anything on your new business?
Mr. President?
Mr. Siegel?
Yes, we had discussed previously, um, and had authorized, um, exploration of a curative amendment on our zoning laws, um, based on, um, the recommendation of Mr. Byrne, we're now suggesting, or he is suggesting, that instead we have a, we amend the zoning laws to address the issue of the, to be in compliance with the Pennsylvania Medical Marijuana Act. Therefore, in order to do so, we would need to schedule a public hearing to consider, um, the zoning amendments. I believe it was distributed by Ms. Hanlon Whitup tonight, a draft resolution that would schedule a public hearing for Monday, May first, twenty-seventeen, at six PM, uh, to address, um, those amendments, or proposed amendments.
We're just going to move the dispensary right next to the skateboard park, aren't we? That's the current plan, isn't it?
So.
I was kidding, to everybody there watching on the television.
Oh, boy.
But, don't, don't forget about the growers.
Skateboarders are, skateboarders are coming into the next meeting.
Uh, they should.
So I, I would, um, introduce the resolution, I don't, we would have to obviously number it, to hold the public hearing on May first at six PM in this room, uh, to address any proposed zoning amendments. May first, it's, would be before our, our work session.
Monday, May first at six PM.
Yes, that's the next public, that's the next meeting we have, that's next date. April is a regular scheduled meeting, so May first, there's no work session in May, in April, excuse me. I'm sorry.
Right.
Dan, I'm sorry, well, for the purpose of, if someone wants to grow miracle marijuana in Havertown or distribute it?
Dispensary facilities.
Oh, just dispense it in Haverford.
And it would also address grower processor, but if we, um, but we have, if we do not have a proper zoning ordinance, then presumably it could be done anywhere, so this would allow regulation.
The state won't, will the state regulate that?
State controls a lot of it, and, and, you know, where, where we can put it, it's industrial zones and commercial zones, I think, under the, under the, under the current state law, uh, but, you know, we want to take a look at our ordinances to see, you know, to refine that as to where we want it in industrial and commercial districts and what we can, um, do from a zoning perspective otherwise, uh, with the use. So, this, what this does is under Section 609, when a new law comes in like that, gives you an opportunity to fix your zoning ordinance, like Mr. Siegel said before, somebody ran in here with an application and said, well, I want to put it in a residential area because you, uh, you don't address it in your zoning ordinance. So this allows us to, to, uh.
I, I, to lay your concerns, it's in no way a preapproval of any site, uh, of any dispensary, of any grower, it's just, it's limiting the places where they could be, but anybody else, anybody who then comes in and still has to go through the process, but we have limited.
Did you say commercial as well? Still like, Minowa Shopping Center?
Well, that's what we're going to look at, I mean, we're going to look at where it goes and, and what we're going to do.
We're down by Bill's Ward. Tasker blind.
But again, I, just so that everybody is clear, we're, Dan, Mr. Siegel is not talking about establishing, um, you know, locations for it or approving them, we are talking about taking the first important step to regulating it, which is first determining where they can't be, which is, you know, in any of our residential areas.
Oh, that's fine, I just wanted to clarify what the state was doing and what our role would be.
Yeah. It, it, truly, it's kind of, it's kind of, if you, if you recall, when we had the billboard fights, and one of their arguments was that we didn't zone for billboards.
That's what I was thinking of just now, right.
And therefore, they could put them wherever they want it.
Yep.
So we want to avoid that hole.
It's fine. What do you need, a date?
No, I've postponed it and then.
You introduced the resolution.
I'll second it.
Yeah, then we want to vote on that.
And then we would just vote.
To establish what, a public hearing on May one relating to changes to our zoning code to address.
Correct.
All right, would you?
The medical marijuana.
Think of argument, just go ahead with the motion, and then, Mr. D'Amelio, you can second.
Yeah, sure.
Um, the motion would be to adopt the resolution, we do not have a number, um, scheduling a public hearing for Monday, May first, twenty-seventeen, at six PM in the Commissioner's Meeting Room, uh, to address zoning change, change, amendments to our zoning code to address Pennsylvania law changes relating to medical marijuana dispensary facilities and medical marijuana grower processor facilities.
Second.
Taken by Mr. D'Amelio.
Mr. President?
Mr. Holmes?
There is a resolution number, that'll be twenty forty-four dash twenty-seventeen.
Thank you.
Uh, can I recommend that we first act to authorize the consideration of a new resolution on our agenda, and then do we need to do that before we do?
Yeah, I think that probably makes sense to, to add it to the agenda and then.
Under new business?
So if we can take?
Right now, we could.
We still do that, don't we, under new business, we still approve?
Yeah.
Whether we'll add something to the agenda?
Yes, we've done that before, yeah, that's the way we've, that's the way we've traditionally done it. So, um.
Can we do all, on a favor?
Right.
Adding it?
So if you could, you could table this right now while we then, so I move to table Mr. Siegel's resolution.
Or I'll withdraw the resolution and we can then, I'll restate it again.
You withdraw the resolution and then agreed to by?
I second it.
Mr. D'Amelio is.
Withdraw.
I move, we add, uh, a resolution addressing zoning and medical marijuana to our agenda tonight.
Second.
I think you could do this on voice vote.
Aliva, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Sieg, all those opposed? There being none, Mr. Siegel, please. The motion carries. Go ahead.
Motion to adopt resolution is a twenty forty-four, twenty-seventeen?
Yes.
Okay, a little bit different. Scheduling a public hearing for Monday, May first, twenty-seventeen, at six PM in the Commissioner's Room, uh, to consider amendments to our zoning ordinance, uh, consistent or regulating medical marijuana dispensary facilities and medical marijuana grower processor facilities under our zoning code.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. D'Amelio. Take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes. That will be put on the website, that on Monday, May first, twenty-seventeen, at six PM, there will be a hearing, meaning of this, in this room. Anything further on our new business?
Yeah, I just, I guess, I don't know if it's under new business, or maybe, um, we can talk about it in, uh, our next work session, but Kelly, do you know if there's an ordinance for satellite dishes, do we? Do we have anything for that?
Um, it hasn't come up in a very, very long time, I'd have to jog my memory a bit.
We do, yeah.
She's correct, there is a.
It's on your mind, Mr. D'Amelio.
Uh, yes. Now, uh, I think more and more people are moving towards satellite, and I just want to make sure that, you know, we're covered by that, and if we need to strengthen that as well, can we take a look at that?
Or I don't think I've seen any come in recently.
Or for what, cable?
No, satellite.
I don't have cable or satellite, I just use an antenna.
Like a satellite.
That's no joke, I have one of them, too.
It's a satellite dish, like Dish Network.
Right.
Yeah, do the same thing.
That survives bad weather.
Do I think it's one?
Okay.
So we can move on?
Yep.
You're going to re, okay.
Should we have a, at least have our current ordinance that addresses, uh, that addresses satellite dishes, you know, just, uh, distributed among us, just to look at?
I would like to, I mean, if we could do that for the next work session.
It's one eighty-two, seven twenty-six in the code.
We won't have a work session in April.
Oh.
No work session. Okay, but certainly.
Gives us plenty of time to think about it.
Yeah.
Kelly, if you can get in and distribute it to the Commissioners?
Yeah.
Or just go to the website and it's.
Yeah, Section one eighty-two, seven twenty-six.
I'll see if I'll send it there.
Anything else on our new business?
Like a computer.
Mr. D'Amelio? Other business?
I just want to, uh, I'm hoping, hoping to have my first ward meeting on Wednesday at seven PM at the Minowa Firehouse. Again, I'm hoping, I'll do my best to, uh, inform the residents, um, if this meeting's canceled, I, it, uh, depends on the storm and how bad it is. So we'll see. I want to thank also the chief again for, uh, recognizing that we needed to strengthen the restoration, and congratulations on that award that you received from that gentleman, that was, uh, that was a very nice thing for them to do, to recognize you, chief, and, um, you know, it's a testament to how you are in the community, you and your police department. They're excellent, uh, with relationships in the community. That's a big part of, of policing, community policing is huge, and your police officers do a fantastic job. I had to call the police on Sunday for a leak at someone's house, they were not there, and the police officer that arrived was, couldn't be more of a gentleman with the residents and, uh, you know, it wasn't life or death situation, but you know what, it's, it was a, it was a leak that was affecting the neighborhood, so I want to thank him as well for coming out. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. McCloskey?
Sure, uh, as Mr. D'Amelio's talked about, there's obviously a storm coming tonight, and as we sat here during this meeting, my, my phone did buzz and, uh, all the schools are closed tomorrow, so, you know, I think we're going to have, everybody be safe for the snow day. On March twenty-fifth, at seven thirty, Hada is having a stand-up for recovery comedy night, it's going to be, take place at Sacred Heart. It's an event that will be a fundraiser for a new scholarship fund that they're, they're starting, uh, and essentially it's for a recovery house, so therefore the scholarship money, it's not a traditional scholarship to a school, but it will send a, uh, Haverford resident who is in need of, uh, recovery to a rehab or a facility for, uh, a period of time. Obviously, those things cost money and, and they're often an impediment, so, um, if you can, March twenty-fifth, seven thirty, Sacred Heart, um, and from what I gather, um, the comedians should be rather funny as well, so if you can make it. Just to mention Christine Ferris, we talked about her retirement, and we talked about it a couple times last month, but, uh, just to reiterate my appreciation for all she has done, uh, for the library and for this township, um, you know, all the praise she's getting at the time of her retirement is well-deserved, um, and as I've indicated to her privately, um, you know, this board will, uh, do everything it can to assure, uh, that the library is taken care of and, uh, remains an integral part of, uh, the library, uh, of the township, excuse me. Commissioner D'Amelio, unfortunately left, but I had a great joke about his, uh, his commissioner meeting that was on a, maybe on St. Patrick's Day, but he's in the back now. So, uh, everybody enjoy St. Patrick's Day. And, uh, on a final note, my kids, uh, tonight at dinner, uh, when I said I had a meeting, suggested that, uh, on behalf of their grandfather, I wish Villanova good luck in the NCAA tournament, so, with that, I will.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Siegel?
Uh, just briefly, I, I just want to announce that on April eighteenth, Commissioner McCloskey and I will be holding a joint constituent meeting in this room at seven PM, uh, and we'll, we're still working on the final list of officials besides the township, but we will have many of them, and to remind residents that our meeting next month, our regular monthly meeting will be on Monday, April third, uh, which is typically the work session the first Monday, there will be no meeting on April tenth, uh, because of the holidays, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Monday, it's not Tuesday, April four, it's Monday, April third?
Yes.
Yeah.
Why did I think it was, I'm sorry?
I don't know.
Just had the schedule wrong.
You got ten and eleven confused earlier.
Right.
Mr. D'Amelio?
It's the snow.
Uh, I'd just like to echo Commissioner McCloskey's comments and others, uh, about the job that Christine Ferris had done, has done at the library, and thank her for her cert, many years of dedicated service and leadership, uh, of the library. Also want to congratulate the library, as Commissioner Wexler, Wexler said, uh, they received a five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant from the state. Want to congratulate the board trustees for their leadership and Christine, and certainly single out, um, number two people, Rochelle Nocito, Nocito, and, uh, Diane Reeves, uh, for their efforts in putting together a very compelling, um, application, uh, compelling enough certainly to, to receive a, a grant of five-hundred-thousand dollars, which is obviously very significant, so, congratulations, and I certainly want to wish Christine Ferris all the best in her, uh, whatever she does next in her life and career. Also want to acknowledge, uh, fifth ward resident for, for achievement, David Welsh, uh, who's a, is up in the Cooper Town area, um, this past, I think it is past weekend, um, won a gold medal at the Special Olympics for ice skating, um, and he won it last year as well, so, uh, it's a repeat winner, it's, um, it's great, uh.
He asked if we were going to give him a proclamation, he sent me a message. If we were going to give him a proclamation, and we're going to, we're going to do that.
Uh, but we're going to acknowledge him tonight, and he, um, represented, um, the community and the township well, uh, in the Special Olympic Games, so congratulations to David, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We're gonna acknowledge him tonight, and he represented the community and the township well in the Special Olympic Games, so congratulations to David, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Holmes?
Mr. President, thank you. Back in August of 2015, I had the misfortune of having my wallet stolen when I was eating lunch downtown in Philadelphia, and anybody who's had their wallet stolen and lost everything in it knows what a hassle it is to replace everything that's in it, and I just wanted you to know that the very first thing I replaced was my Haverford Township free library card, and Christine herself delivered it to my house that evening, so it's, Christine's work will live on, well beyond her time at the library, but, but she will be missed. I was scheduled to have my Commissioner constituent town hall tomorrow night at the Chestnut Wald School, since it will be locked tight, and our Chief of Police Township Manager and everybody else who's gonna attend with me is going to be occupied by more important things tomorrow, my, my meeting is officially postponed, I've already alerted various people through the different media that we indicated, my goal is to redo it next Tuesday, the 21st of March, and I will send out, excuse me, I'll send out appropriate notices to everybody. There was just one last thing I wanted to note.
21st?
Mister, what's that?
21st is the scadium meeting.
21st is the scadiums meeting in here? Okay, I'm gonna see about the 22nd.
I'm here.
You're here?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna see about the 23rd. What's that, a Thursday?
24th, 25th.
This is just, it's just not my week. I, I want to finish on a more serious note, Mr. Anderson raised some, some points for us about, you know, about the work we do as township commissioners, and I just, and bipartisanship in particular, so a story in the Associated Press just a couple weeks ago came out, and it's something I wanted to share with everybody on this board, because it's very important to me, and it's very important to all of us. The Journey, the Journal of the American Medical Association Pediatric Division just published a story, that teen suicide attempts in the United States have declined, and declined with some significance after same-sex marriage became legal in various places, and after it became legal federally. It has not yet happened at the state level here in Pennsylvania, but it happened at this township, and one of the things we talked about when we considered that ordinance was the effect that it would have, and the hope we would have, that it would do something about the terrible teen suicide rate, especially among the LBG-T community. This is proof that those changes, those ordinances, those resolutions passed either at the state level or at the local level made a difference, so I applaud all my colleagues on this board, and the township in general, for being one of the, one of the people out on the front of this issue, ahead of our state, and ahead of our Supreme Court. It made an immediate and palpable difference, up to a 14% decrease in suicides among teens who identified themselves as LBG or T, so thank you to you all, and it was, that was indeed proof of the extraordinary benefit that comes from acting bipartisanly, and for the best interests of the township, so thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. McGarrett?
Yeah, I just want to talk about the number one, Kevin Kane, the 5K run, that'll be on Sunday, April 2nd, at Annunciation Church, and the registration signup is at 1 o'clock, but if you want to sign up early, McGillicuddy's on Saturday night, you can go there, and they sign you up from 5 o'clock on at McGillicuddy's in Brookline. The Kevin Kane is 1 to 3, and the reception this year will not be at the firehouse, it will be at Annunciation Church, which for the reason of, it's always jammed at the firehouse, and they needed a bigger spot, and the church holds almost twice as many, so that's the reason for that. The second, the second thing is, I'd just like to go back to what Mr. Brooks was saying about Mr. Sansstrom, and it's really a sad day when we lost Roy, he was more of a worker than anybody could imagine, I mean, the man's heart and soul was in the Grange Estate, in fact, they should rename the Grange to Roy Sansstrom Estate, I mean, that's, that's how much he dedicated his time, effort, and everything to it, but if anybody wants to know about the, we don't know anything about the arrangements for Roy yet, but my wife phoned at 610-446-8088, as soon as we find out, if you could give a call, if you're interested, she could give you the results of where and when it will be. And again, just like Chad Brooks, just to show you the type of people at the Grange, there's a man that spends literally three and a half to four months with his Christmas decorations to do, do the Grange, it takes him almost a month and a half to set it up and a month and a half to take it down, and that's the kind of dedication that people like Mr. Brooks and many, many others at the Grange do, and, and that's the type of person that Roy Sansstrom was, and we will be looking for more volunteers for anybody that wants to volunteer, so with that, I say, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Wexler?
Yeah, my condolences on behalf of the Hilltop Civic Association for Roy as well, like, again, I can't describe the amount of work he does to help them. The Hilltop Civic Association meets next week on March 23rd at 7:30 at the Bon Air Fire Company, that's where I do my quarterly updates for the ninth ward. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Christine again, and also Rochelle, Rochelle Nocito, and Donna Reeves, the financial manager, and all the employees there, the building committee especially, to put all the grant material together for Rochelle to put together, to formulate the grant, and get us that half a million dollars, or half a, yeah, half a million, $500,000 for the library. And then, I'd like to just, Mr. Goldman made a great point, township over party, and I'm proud to say that when, I've heard citizens, when I was president of the board for the five years, and people would call me, I've never heard a commissioner on this board over the last 10 years, ask a, ask a constituent, when they've got a call, what, what party or how you're registered. I think we're, we're here for service, and I think, no matter what political party we are in, this is a good neighborhood, as evidenced by the award that the chief was presented tonight, the harmony, the way we get along, to what the Reverend said in his prayer this evening, on how much we care about this community, I think it's evident every day. We may argue, but I think that care is evident in the way we treat each other and the way we treat our residents, so it's, I'm proud to say that I've, I've raised my family here, and I'm proud to say that I live here as well, so thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Goldman. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Chris, can I just go back for a minute, I forgot a couple important things, number one, we had two people that passed away over the weekend, and I was involved with one, my wife, and with the other, and I just want to tell you that the support of Johnny Viola, the police chief, and his department was wonderful, they saw, they went in, they took care of the matters in both places, Mr. Sansstrom and the other person, and it was good to see that the personal feeling that they had towards the job that they do, and the excellent, the police that were there, it was excellent, and thank you again, John, I forgot, I really appreciate the support of John, he knew that we were pretty upset about everything, and he took control of the whole situation, so thanks again, John.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Aliva?
Okay, a couple things I wanted to talk about, once, one is, I was able to attend the, Commissioner McCloskey had a, or with HADA, had a movie night, an eye-opening movie night over at the, at the high school auditorium, thank you for that. Commissioner, it was, it was, again, very eye-opening, something you need to see, if you have the opportunity, go out to www.fbi.org/chasingthedragon, and watch this film, if you have children, watch the film, and then watch it with your children, if they are, are of age, to watch something, it is a very eye-opening movie of what happens with, with heroin, how it starts, it's a pattern that just keeps happening over and over again, it starts one way, it continues that way, and you see that people, it's a, it's something that never ends for these people, you know, it starts innocently enough, and, and then blossoms into something that is, is a dragon, literally, you're, you are chasing the dragon, so watch the movie, talk to your children, it is very important that you do this, to try to stop, you know, the epidemic, and it was a fantastic night, there was about 300 people there who came out for the movie, and I'm glad I went, but you need to watch it. I also wanted to thank Christine for her, for her work over the years, I know, some people I've talked about, I know, and Bill has said about the marple and all the libraries when she started out were, were about the same, and when she came, you know, she has gotten way above the amount of people coming through her library, and that's because of her programs. She has seen that, or, or became aware that the library was not just a book repository, that is a community center, and that we need to treat it that way, and that's the way she treated it, and that's why she is where she is, she did a fantastic job with that, and I thank her, and my kids thank her, and I think everybody has said very nice things about her. The HPD is having a meet and greet at the Y on March 22nd, it's a, from 8:30 to 9, I'm sorry, from 8:00 to 9:30 AM, you can come in and meet, you know, it's for businesses to come in, and Commissioners and, and residents to meet, just meet business owners in, in the township. We're also having Quizzle Night at the Oakmont, the HPD is hosting a Quizzle Night Tuesday, March 21st, you've got to be there by 8 o'clock, have your money in, by 8 o'clock, it's $10, and that is raising money for the HPD, and then, the, there's a Beef and Beer, Haver Town Beef and Beer, Friday, April 7th, from 7:00 to 10:00 PM, at Tipper Leary's, and that's to benefit the Lanark Advocacy Group, it is $25 per ticket. And then, the HPD is having a strategic business planning workshop for any business, you can sign up on their website, just go out to the HPD website, it's on, it's five different nights, up at the Crack, April 4th, 11th, 18th, 25th, and then again on May 9th, from 6:30 to 9, it's for any business, they'll help you, they're bringing in someone from the Wharton Business School to talk with business owners and help them put together a business plan, things like that, so if you're a business owner, this would be a great opportunity for you to get involved, go out to the HPD's website. And the Haverford Reserve Dog Park is having Paul Pictures with the Easter Bunny, Saturday, April 8th, from 11 to 2:00 PM, go on out and support the dog park. And I just wanted to touch on, I know I'm taking a lot of time, I wanted to touch on something that Larry Holmes said about the anti-discrimination, that ordinance was, was very big, you know, there was six of us who voted for that, for that ordinance, and it just proved how bipartisan we were, that it was, I'm sorry, was it five? Okay, it was five, but...
I remember it passed, I thought it was nine.
Yeah, but it was, it was, it's, it's, it was a, it was a 5-4 vote, it was two Republicans and three Democrats working together to get that passed, so, and I was glad to be part of that group, and bringing, you know, teen suicide rates down, and, and just being a friendly community, a community that I grew up in and, and love very much, and I've been a commissioner for, for a long time, well, not that long, but 12 years, and so I'll just close with that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Connell? Yes. March 22nd, Wednesday, at 7:00 PM, there'll be an eighth ward town meeting here, Second Ward's gonna join us?
Yes, Second Ward is coming to the...
Okay, and we're going to discuss stormwater management by Pinoni Associates, we're also going to discuss your property and with the police department, how you can secure it, how you can be safe, feel safe in your own property. We'll have a couple of other things, but March 22nd, Wednesday, 7:00 PM, here for the eighth ward, second ward town meeting. We will not, we will have our regular Commissioners meeting, again on April 3rd, here at 7:00 PM. April 10th, there will not be a meeting due to the observance of Passover, so again, April 3rd will be our regular Commissioners meeting, there will not be a work session. April 10th, when we usually have the regular meeting, there will not be a township meeting on that day, okay? Thank you very much. Anybody else?